And pause recording up there. You might have to blow it up. Pause.
Okay, being six o'clock, open select board meeting from November 15. First thing on the agenda is the public hearing. To discuss and act on deposit and the role of on to the capital reserve and expendable trust funds for qualified purposes. Including but not limited to the fire department air packs, public works, why need one, they, bosses, and employee and retiring.
Okay, so basically, I'm just going to go over the revenues and then the expenses, and you can do your votes at the end of everything.
Okay.
So revenues are, it's a pretty short list. We have the CIP Capital Reserve. That was approved at town meeting at $519,568. $45,000 of that will come from the unassigned fund balance. Then there's $30,000 that will be deposited into the Employee and Retirement Benefits Trust. That is all coming from the unassigned fund balance per town meeting vote. Cemetery Maintenance Fund, the Expendable Trust Fund gets all of the revenue from the sale of lots, and so far this year, that's $3,250. We have $36 in trail map fund revenue. So those are those little $2 maps that Kurt Gotheart had printed up. And that goes into a special fund for future printing of more maps, and the town manager is authorized to withdraw and deposit into that, these expendable trusts. So no motion will be required. Then the Municipal Water System Capital Reserve Fund and the Municipal Sewer System Capital Reserve Fund both have $25,000 budgeted for deposit in 2021. Then if we move on to, oh, I have to defend somebody again. If we move on to withdrawals. Most of the first ones that you see on the list, let me see. Through number, they're all numbered, so through number 15. Those are all pre-approved. Many of these don't have any withdrawals. The, the rescue pumper for the fire department, the DPW ten wheeler. The DPW building improvements and the cruiser and the F-350. Those were all, they're all approved expenses from the capital reserve fund, but they're, we're borrowing the funds and there's no payment this year. When it comes to the DPW improvements, because that was a multi-part project and one, the exhaust system for the garage bay has been completed. The insulation will probably be done in early 2022. And the roof extension on this building is kind of in flux based on the, the cost that has come, the quotes that have come in for that are exceedingly high. So we're rethinking that. So the proposal will be to take $7,052.60 from the CIP Capital Reserve Fund as cash rather than borrowing for the exhaust system piece in the highway base. Then we have some other things listed. The gas tank replacement is on hold. The gas pump computer system is not ready yet, so there's no action to be taken there. The steamer that was on the CIP list in the spring for town meeting was purchased this year, so we'd be looking for, and you've already approved that money, but that would be a withdrawal of $14,949.80. No vote is required because you've already done that. Then we don't have any municipal facilities planning project expenses at this point. There might be something later on for printing expenses for bread, you know, for the bread loaf wire. But we'll have to get those funds next year. We currently have $21,823.68 in employee and retirement benefit claims to be withdrawn from that, the trust fund. We like to do the deposit separately and do the withdrawals separately so that the numbers all match and line up with town meeting posts and that sort of thing. Now, we know that we're going to have more expenses at the end of the year, but we'll have to wait until next year to recover those from the fund. Or have the town manager do it partway through. The next item is the fire department air packs. This was already on the spring list, but because it's an amount that's $175 more than was originally budgeted, it's now at $40,175.
And still maybe it's coming in.
He did, yes, but we're going to need a vote for that. The Massoma Lakeside Park Trust Fund, we would only ask for money if the expenses exceeded grant revenues and they don't. The grant revenues stay in the general fund and more expenses can be applied towards the, the revenues so that it all balanced out in the end. Old Home Days did not have any revenues this year. They didn't do any fundraising that I'm aware of. Like, we have received no revenues. So all we have is their expenses for the old home day this year of $925.83, which the town manager is authorized to withdraw. So in summary, there's going to be through things that are already approved and what you would be voting on tonight. $252,202.25 from the CIP Capital Reserve Fund. $21,823.69 from the Employee and Retirement Benefits Trust Fund. $925.83 from the Old Home Days Fund for a total of $274,951.77.
I just wanted to point out on that last piece, there's a rounding. I think it's just the way that spreadsheet rounded.
A good day.
Yeah, just check, the one at 68, the one at 69. For that play.
All right.
Yeah, I, it's, I think it's probably a feature.
Oh, yes.
So, yeah.
Okay, so I will double check that, that penny to make sure that.
I just don't want you to be chasing a penny later.
I don't want to chase that penny.
It's a sad, sad thing to do for a penny. So I will make that motion.
Well, actually, you should invite comment and closure hearing and all of that, so. Gary, so Gary Hutchins does, yes.
Yes.
It's nice that I'm over your shoulder, Kate. Yeah, I just want to make a comment. I'm glad to hear that the gas tank is on hold.
We, we can't hear you right now. You're, you're.
Because this is not the time to be buying. I'm not muted, so I don't know what's going on.
You're fine now, Gary. Your microphone seems, seemed to have come loose or something.
Okay. Well, anyway, I just want to comment that I was, I was glad to see that the gas tank for the DPW is on hold because we should not be buying any more gas tanks. We should be putting electric vehicle chargers in and making a commitment.
Your mic's gone again, Gary.
Not buy any more gas vehicles. That's my internet.
So, so Gary Hutchins did submit an email through the town's website that I got today, which is too late to put on the agenda for today. But it is slated for your agenda at the next meeting where he, he discusses his views on the electric vehicles and the charging stations and
The overall.
Oh, the overall energy, yes.
So we have a motion.
I move with closed public hearing. Aye.
Okay, now you can make your motions.
Yep, I make a motion to approve the withdrawal from CIP.
Withdrawal. I'll second that. Aye.
Aye. And we need a motion on the deposits to municipal water and sewer.
I'll make a motion that we approve the proposed habit water and sewer.
I'll second that.
Favor.
Aye.
Okay. CIP.
That, that is it.
Next on the agenda, we approve minutes of November 1st.
I would move that we approve the list presented.
I have one small correction. During the discussion of recreation. I asked why it is still being referred to as Massoma Valley Recreation when it's really just Enfield. And Bridgette LeBrie commented that they were possibly changing that and that it really recreation and like that in the minutes.
I thought. Was that not what Matt was? Because that stuff, there's a line that says that. It's page three, third paragraph down. And then she reiterates, so I think it's already here.
Well, it, it was Bridgette that said, yes, it is confusing. And it, they are working. So that's not clear to me.
Maybe we should go back and check that just so that it's clear. I'm not sure that's how it's worked.
You recall that exchange, Emily?
Um, so I honestly haven't re-listened to that section because I presented in that section. So I, I re-listened to make sure that things were reiterated so that I wasn't only representing kind of like my presentation perspective. So I purposely re-listened for that intention. But I thought that Bridgette had acknowledged that it was emerging of the two departments under Enfield to clarify that it is, you know, that, that is part of the proposal.
But several people have asked me about this, and that's why I think it should be funded in 20 minutes, that it will be.
Okay, and it says she stated that this proposal is combining what already exists while offering more to our residents and our local infrastructure.
And paragraph three is, Kate pointed out, says that Mr. Young stated that the Enfield Recreation Director position vacant now would be an excellent time to reorganize and restructure the department, including consolidating the MVPR position into Enfield program.
Okay, but that's not what, I understand it says the same thing, but it makes no difference.
All right, you can have your comment in these minutes, but I'm opposed to admitting them to suit whatever agenda you might have.
Are any other comments regarding?
I'll second the most presented.
I, I made the motion. Aye.
And board reports.
Yeah, I'm trying to think if I have my notes with me. I'm not sure I do. I've got a hold on that.
Planning Board, Matts, and it was a pretty light agenda, but a considerable amount of time was spent talking about spot zoning of the Shed Street property again and proposal to look at that for town meeting and then discussion on possibly eliminating the portion of the zoning ordinance in which Main Street is bound residential downstairs and sorry, residential upstairs and business downstairs. And, you know, the merits of that, and it kind of sounds like folks maybe are willing to not add another item on to the warrants because it's going to be a very long warrant anyways. So we'll see where that goes, but it doesn't really make sense necessarily. It's, I think, was the general consensus to do it and then get the outcome of the master planning task up and what the task force found and changes again. So like do it once instead of doing it twice. And then the third piece was a long discussion on updating our sign order to be more modern and friendly and allow things like energy efficient places and the merits that it's doing happen. So that's a pretty long and complex process. So it, you know, involves a conversation on safety and, you know, you don't want things that are like taking drivers' attention away, but you also want to have, and you want to have something pathetically pleasing nice at the end. So that is the work in process. If anybody wants to see the latest draft, you can email Rob Taylor.
I do have some, the agenda items in the budget committee meeting. Recreation, cemetery, building, health, planning, zoning, fire department. It was busy. The fire department presentation was succinct and to the point. Building and health, same, no controversies there. Recreation was apparently lengthy. Um, and I'm not sure any conclusions were resulted in that. Discussion of the cemetery was pretty minor. The planning zoning presentation was lengthy but without fanfare.
I went to the Eva board meeting and they are focused on doing their annual appeal and I thought I would share the small point of interest that I learned. There's the sign that's at the corner of 4A and Main Street, right across from Shakoma Beach, and it's on the property that the parking lot is on. And we regularly get questions, I think, in general in the public. I've got quite a few, like, how do I get on the sign? Why is that little thing on the sign? And so there was a question of ownership, and it turns out that sign was put in as an Eagle Scout project. Nobody owns the project. And so it, there's a question. I think Eva right now is committing to helping one of the local, the takeoff as the funds entity and something to think about and know because it is a very attractive sign. It does lead to our Main Street and we are working on so there's that piece. And then to jump over, I went to a meeting that had with the Eva Events Committee and Recreation. Looking at tying in the holiday event from the Massoma Valley, and I texted the Lisa. Because the tree lighting usually is on the calendar, but given what happened last year with COVID, it's just not on there. And so the question was, when did we want to light the town Christmas tree? And I said, I would bring that to you guys.
Regarding the sign at the Port of Jacob Bridge at Main Street, that was discussed last year. They determined that businesses only on Main Street would be on the sign. It was an application for something. Before that one would be on the sign. We decided that it didn't make sense.
Yeah, I think it's Main Street and 4A because there's four of them. Yeah, it's the intersection one.
The original sign, it was put up by the developers of
Low Village Village.
Yeah.
I knew it was a voice project.
Yeah, I, gosh, I forgotten how anything got there, been there for so long. Um, the question on the Christmas tree, really, we just, last year, we just lit it and put a Facebook video up for folks this year. They're going to do, it sounds like the outing club has decided to do their drive-through again, although I don't know if they work for the police department yet. So, look at me, look at Emily. They may have not done that step where they coordinated with the public safety about the traffic. So I think we might, it might be smart to wait on that. There, Eva is willing to do like a small, kind of like hot cocoa type events. So I think we don't have to decide tonight. I just.
So was Eva planning on doing their hometown holidays on Saturday?
So they okay, I can't remember who had Wednesday. One of them had Friday and one of them had Saturday. And I think they had, I don't know, they.
Enfield Outing Club routinely had their, their party on Friday night.
Friday night, and I think they, did they want Saturday?
They were talking about Saturday either after hometown holidays or taking the place of if they weren't going to hold it. So it was kind of up in the air.
Yeah, so hometown holidays is going to be more without being all of that. So it's going to tie in, but there'll be smaller events and opportunities. So there'll be like a Santa mailbox. It'll be available, but it will also tie into Keenan and to Grattan and the other towns in the sense that local businesses will be able to, will be hopefully doing some advertising and will send a five top flyer. So instead of being one day where everybody scrambled, I think it's going to be a much bigger Don. Our shampoo is leading that charge. So, and I think another year they might do something in the building, but I think for this year, it's too late for them to pull off a larger item, so.
Originally, the, the early days of hometown holidays, it was open down Main Street.
Yep, right. I know they had things on Main Street, but they also had some things inside the community building. And so we've reserved the community building for hometown holidays every year by default.
Right, and I think it's changed over the years. You know, one year they were put these down at the Lutheran Church. So I, we kind of filled on in on the history, so she would have some of that. And it's like, what could they do this year? And so she is working with the Eva events team on that. I kind of tied it. And Bridgette sat in with her recreation hat on to tie in some pieces. So they are working on that. And I guess when the outing club potential drive-through, Christmas thing is sort of that, we'll know more about the tree.
There were other ideas for the Police Benevolent Association to possibly hold another, we, in the community building, as well as a cookie decorating party, which was, we were hoping to do like a back to that, back either Friday and then Saturday or Saturday and Sunday. I'm not sure. Connections that may be with town offices yet, but I am working on making sure that those connections are.
We'll want to hook you up with Don because we'll want to list that.
Yep.
In the.
Hearing this, we'll know we need to connect with you.
And anything that I can get for the December newsletter would also be great. I'll be on vacation, but I'll be doing the newsletter anyway.
When's your date? When is your drop date for that?
Very early morning on the 30th of November.
Okay.
Yeah, we can do that. Don is don.nfieldsvillageassociation@gmail.com.
Okay, so that is.
Yep.
Lakeside Park and Heritage Church. Mission that is still pursuing the Enfield historic triangle and that will be a part of the city. This is in preparation to apply certified local backing status. And it would be the three buildings search of townhouse and the center of sports. Recently chose these three buildings is that it doesn't involve private citizens, other than the schoolhouses and providing stores and trying to with an established local historic district that will allow us to apply certified status, which in turn allows us to apply the grants that we give by the old, particularly planning. So that's what we've been working on and we had the women from the Cancer Preservation Alliance. Yet again, as she's the person that took over Hannah Bush's job at the Preservation Alliance, and she suggested that we apply for a plan to capture brand for nonsense for the so that's, that's, and also we applied to the Preservation Alliance over their grants, which is a group that's just what conditions and what it would need for it to certainly on the news that Scott either talking about laterizing in the straight meeting house. Be able to use it in the game box. Lakeside Park. If I part to see.
We have some concerns that they can't hear you well on Zoom, but you can talk a little louder because we really can't move the.
It's the air partially. Yeah, if we lower the temperature. Yeah, I think, so in the past, we've raised the temperature before the meeting, so the room was warm and then lowered it to the blower, which.
A very noisy blow up.
Yeah.
Okay, do they need me to repeat any of this or?
Just you, you're outside.
These are outside.
My, my large noisy noise. Lakeside Park, Steve Patton is working on the access ramp. Should be finished, I would say, by the end of this week. That's been completely covered with donations to that specific brand. Brand project. We had a private donation of $2,000, oh, two thousand, yeah, two thousand. Another $2,000 donation from the Friends of the Rail Trail. And a $200 private donation to come up with $300 needed to build the ramp. It also has a path that leads from the ramp. We're waiting for light burns to show, to get back to Florida, so they can rebuild the retaining wall of the consumer and the location class. So that's and go by various ramps. I agree, it's very active over there. I went by yesterday and she's planting yet again more bulbs. She has another master garden that's working as a part of the gentleman from Grant. For its own garden, yes, the editor with over plants and bulbs. He planted, so it could be pretty cool. Great. I've been going back and forth and more and the new head of the entire Friends of the Northern Rail Trail. Turns out she was my neighbor in Willman. So you already know her, which is nice. We have a relationship working out hiccups between the rail trail users and everybody else. And hopefully getting the message across not to ride or walk down the embankment. Which would hope to landscape in such a way that it'll make it that's impossible to get down that path. Because we're killing the grass. It's over in one corner. That's it. Yeah.
I don't have a long list, but we want to talk a little bit, as you know, we, we've been advertising for a part-time deputy clerk position. That's about a discussion for a year now. We haven't had any luck with any meaningful applicants for part-time. So we kind of tossed out full-time a little bit and we've had a little more response full-time. It's not a big difference in the hours. It's like those 35 to 40 or something.
The benefit package.
Yeah, you tip over a little bit, you add, what, about $8,000 to the budget. And it seems to improve the attractiveness of that position. I don't think in the long run, that's a bad way to go in terms of succession planning and cross training people in the office, that sort of thing. You want to talk about it at all or we're just trying to see, obviously, if we could fill it hard time successfully, but that, obviously, that's easier.
Yeah, that would, our choice would just be to do the part-time position if we could fill it that way. But we're having a very hard time finding anybody interested in a part-time position without benefits. So.
Which makes perfect sense.
And I think we could use somebody, even if they don't do town clerk work for the entire 40 hours, we could use them for other things.
Like helping out in recreation.
Well, well, scheduling and other, other.
There's a number of things in the office.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, it wasn't that long ago that we, we basically kind of started one person as if they roll a lot of cross training. So we're going to bolster that a bit by doing some cross training because obviously you need to be able to have government. So I think adding a few hours to that kind of maybe might, might help this person, not only be assistant deputy clerk, but also kind of the maybe call a pitcher or something for other departments, so. So we, we just wanted to get some feedback. We have an average. So we, we just wanted to get some feedback. We haven't advertised the full-time. With bigger without this conversation, but we were scoping it out with others to see what would that, would that make a difference? How does that feel?
Uh, yeah, I think the job market is really competitive and. A, a position with no benefits is not terribly compelling unless you happen to be lucky enough to have a. Partner who has them or not need them for one reason or another, like you retired from a government state job. And I have, I have concerns about creating part-time and part-time and part-time positions because. It's almost like shirping our moral responsibility to provide for somebody, you know, if it, we truly need a part-time position. That's one thing, but if we have enough work to make it a full-time, I'm very supportive of. Of providing full-time work. And I think you're more likely to get longevity. Out of someone who hasn't worked full-time.
I, I, I think you're right. I mean, I think there's a certain pressure that we talk about literally every day, particularly during budget season to. You know, do less, do less, get by with less. And so you kind of end up sometimes undershooting what you really need and what you really want to have. Just out of deference to the, to the math, but, but at the end of the day. Uh, we, we, there's no question we need a deputy clerk and that we need, we need that backup. And there's simply too much work for one person.
Which also brings the subject, just to forewarn you. If we don't get somebody in place, one person cannot keep the office open the hours that it's open now. They can still do mail-ins and all of that, but the office hours that they're open might have to be scaled back just a little bit. Until we get a second person in, and it takes a full month of them watching before they're allowed to do motor vehicle registrations.
There's actually a bit of a certification.
Yeah, I'm all in favor of going full-time.
So given that, then we'll, we'll act accordingly and see, see if we can have better luck at them. As you know, we set the, we, we kind of nailed down the tax rate, the tax bills are. Will be generated since we can get them all printed up. You folks have got some documents to sign. In order for us to send the tax bills out. Bread loaf, uh, we're getting dangerously close to having the brochure that we've been waiting for for months. That talks about Whitney Hall and the library and that sort of thing. Working with them every week to kind of keep this moving. So once we get that, I was hoping I would have had it last week, something came up. So we got kicked aside a little bit. So now they're back on it for this week. We'll get it, review it. Uh, close our eyes, get it to the printers and it'll take about seven to ten days for the printer to. Do what they do, then it'll get mailed out to the postal patrons for Enfield and Enfield Center. Kind of set that all up to be ready. And then, uh, once the brochures have been mailed out to everybody. We'll set a date for these public information sessions that we had talked about months and months ago. And, uh. So we're, we're, we're getting there. It's, it hasn't happened as quickly as I would have liked, but.
Have to apologize for forgetting to put my mask on.
Although if you do put it over your eyes, you can still drink. Okay, moving on. The, uh, as you, as you, as you remember, I did up an RFP for invasive species to try to get. Promotions from qualified folks to help us, uh, uh, address and organize. Methodical funded plan to deal with invasive terrestrial species on town on land. At least at the first, uh, run. And that deadline that for those proposals is the seventeenth. I, I know I'm getting one, I believe I'm getting two. Is, it might not surprise you to learn that. There's not a lot of people that actually do this in that, in that sort of way, in a sort of. Plan management sort of way. Obviously, there are people that will spray herbicides around. But we're obviously looking for something more than that. Uh, so, but those will be coming and I'll take a look at those and talk about those down the road. I, I, I want to talk, I've asked Jim Taylor to be here and I did send an email to. Nick Felix. At Hughes Park. We got water down there, as you know, you guys probably know better than I do. It, it tends to be a seasonal water source in, in that during the winter, Jim can recap this. We shut the water off, drain it, so forth. But there are other events that happen kind of after we've shut it off. That I think the Lions Club uses it for Christmas trees and perhaps other things.
They use it for their coffee water.
Yeah, and so last fall or winter or spring, I can't remember. The pipe was found to be fractured from frost because it. It either hadn't been turned off correctly or hadn't been drained and, and. So I, I talked to, uh. Mr. Felix about it and he said that the Lions Club would be willing to. Pay. Drain it when they're done with that. And not burn the town with it. My rec, my understanding is from our point of view, from DBW's point of view. We don't know how well they. Do that. It, it did suffer some damage. Um, and it's a bit of a disagreement as to. Who's, whose job it is, who can do it well, who wants to, who's able to do it. So I said, well, let's, let's just get it out in the open and let's just kind of talk about it. And see if we can kind of get those sides of it and get some judgment or some decision about. What, what direction to go in, because I don't have that answer. Jim, do you want to talk about that a little bit, what the history is?
Sure, can everybody hear me all right? Okay, great. Um, yeah, so it's, uh, this, it's last probably five, six, seven years. We have taken the meter out of there in October and it has not gone back in. And, um, the Lions have been a little disappointed that we do that. Um, we have felt it's just too risky to, to have the, the meter in there and. And the way the thing is structured is that there's a curb stop that's right near the slab of the found it. Of the, um, of the pavilion building. And then it goes out and up through the, the slab of the community building into one of the interior walls. And, um, but it's very close to the exterior. And so. In the past, we've had a couple of times, the Lions used to use it every year. Um, Ken Hill, who was a, you know, a licensed plumber, sort of oversaw it, but even with him overseeing it, it would. Uh, you know, sometimes the heat would go off or it wasn't warm enough in there or. Uh, there wasn't enough snow to sort of insulate it. And if we got a lot of cold weather in, end of November, early December. Um, it would, it would freeze a pipe and then Ken would fix it. Um, and so I think Ken Hill himself said, you know, I, I don't think it's worth doing that. And so. And our water department concurred. And so for a long time, we've just been taking the meter out of there. Um, and we've gotten this request a whole bunch of times. I think last year Ryan dealt with this. And I thought, I looked in the minutes, I couldn't find it. I thought he brought it to you guys, but maybe he didn't. Um, and I guess, you know, my recommendation is, is to, to come up with some sort of an alternative. I, I'm not sure exactly what they use the water for. I've heard they use it to make coffee. I've heard that you need to wash their hands because of the pine pitch on the, on the, the, the trees, but. I mean, I'd, I'd much rather see them rent a, uh, you know, hot, cold. Um, you know, water cooler type unit with the five gallon carboids. And plug that in for their duration, then we could pull it out at the end of the season. And, you know, get them a case of hand wipes to, to keep their hands clean. Um, the community building, they obviously have their own space in there. They're using the bathroom in there. Um, and they have their own room. So, you know, I, I, I guess. I, I think the benefit cost is, or the benefit risk is, is, is just not great. Um, but, you know, again, I, I think it's the select board, you know, determining, you know, what, what, what do we want to offer to. Organizations that, that do good work in the community. Um, you know, and, and, you know, do we want to put that at risk and et cetera? Um, I, I, I can respect Nick's, um, you know, willingness to, to oversee that. But it, but it's not just them because there is a meter that the water department has to deal with and, and a valve that we have a special wrench to be on. And, um, so, you know, we, we would have to be involved in that no matter what.
Jim, it seems to me it's a no-brainer. Um, I know Doug blows out with a compressor, our outdoor water lines. Well, before this time. To make sure that they, we, we don't have a freezer. And they, they have access to water in the community building. And if push came to shove, they could go in there and wash their hands for that matter. And why don't they wear gloves? Then they wouldn't have the. Pitch on their hands.
I think they have de, and the access is deeded access. It's not like an oil promise. It's an actual deeded. So I think there were some concerns, um, that I heard about when there's an event there. Well, that's never stopped them from walking in the door and downstairs and. My memory, uh, and I have no problem with that doing that because they have needed right to go to their room. So I think you go downstairs, you use the bathroom and it's safe. It doesn't put our building at risk. And, I mean, aside from doing a memorandum of understanding in which they pay for the damage. You know, that's great and all, but our guys, we don't even have enough people to staff DPW still, I think. So I don't think we can commit our staff to another ticket item.
Yeah, I agree with you that. I think they, they have another option that I think is very usable, very reasonable. And, uh, I think we need to shut the water down.
Absolutely. When the temperature drops to a certain point, the water gets shut off until. Spring and when it's safe to turn it on again.
I think that's a fabulous idea with the water cooler too. The hot and cold ones are very, very good.
Yeah, I never, never thought of that.
It makes you tea, it makes you hot cocoa, um, and you get plenty of water. So when I do outdoor and remote events, which I do frequently. I have a food grade five gallon pail that's used for brewing beer, right? Uh, I don't use it for that, but it's got a spigot. So I bring my own water from home. It doesn't even, even cost anything. So I think there are other alternatives that are cost-effective and reasonable.
I think we're all in agreement on this.
Yeah, they did acknowledge that. Community building is just hauling the water out and. Obviously, it's not as. Okay, so say one, so say you all.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. So subject any questions, if that's. And, uh, just so I don't forget it. I, I still need to kind of connect with Dolores at some point.
No. Okay.
On the. Three, three, three acre island or.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, Angus has some background on that, um, and the history. And he is on, um, because that about his property. And so he's had Scott Sandborn do some work, so you might want to check in with him.
What just?
He has Scott Sandborn, who's the surveyor.
Oh, yeah.
Do some work. So Angus is right there.
Hey Angus.
Hey, everyone. Uh, yeah, I had it, uh, surveyed for about four years ago, right after I moved in and. Uh, Scott did a title search on the island and it apparently. And I, I, at some point, I think I gave Ryan a copy of the survey, but, uh. Uh, so it may still be in the town offices somewhere. I, I think I still have my copy of the survey. Um, somewhere. But the, the big takeaway is that, uh, when it was originally deeded to the Shakers. Uh, the deed read, uh, you know, the waters, the Maskoma River and all the land under it. And when they took out the dam and the mill pond went away and the island came up. That's been the Shakers the whole time and every, I guess, apparently every other subsequent deed around the river. Uh, only went to the. Uh, you know, to the edge of the river, um, and. The island never changed hands from the original deed.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, I'd love to see that sometime, I guess. I can swing down and.
Yeah, I'll, I'll see. I'll, I'm not at home right now, but I'll, uh, I think I know where it is and I'll, I'll try to dig it.
If we could get a copy, that would be great because if Ryan got a copy, our assessing department did not, and that's really where it belongs.
Yeah, I, I've been working with Julian. They, there's not this history, so. Uh, that would be useful to actually make that record a little more official than it's been. Because obviously. Water rights are only water rights because they flow over the land that's owned by a human being. And, and so. That it's the land that's on, not the water. So that would be interesting to see.
It's more interesting when you're the Shakers because if it's the last descendant of, they didn't reproduce.
There is a trust, I believe the office is in Concord. Shaker Trust, Mary Ann Hagan would be able to give me the details on that. There, there are surviving Shakers at Sabbath Day Lake, like four or five of them.
Yeah.
They're the only surviving.
It was Scott's opinion that it was the Sabbath Day Lake Shakers that technically were the owners now.
Who's Mary Ann?
Mary Ann Hagan is.
So there goes.
What, but they're a religious organization.
And I know Alan Strickland came to us one time. He was very, very interested because it has such a plethora of. Fabulous different kinds of flora and fauna and it's brightener downtown. And, I mean, a lot of people don't even know there's islands there.
Yeah, the state did a pretty meticulous study of it.
Yeah, you know, the, you know, the reason it came up obviously was the issue of. Trying to protect it by putting it in a conservation easement or buying it in some fashion or other. And, uh, I had. Uh, made it a, a date with Dolores to meet and talk about it. And I had her on date. She showed up and I was in a conflict, but. I'm not sure it's either accessible or buildable for a number of reasons. And, uh.
Shoreline protection being the number one.
Yeah, and, and, uh, but any of that. Typically, the idea of a conservation easement is to remove from rest properties that are subject to development or threatened development. And, uh, if property isn't subject for development or is at risk, then, then the, there's no real gain for putting it in conservation.
And it costs money to put it in a conservation easement.
Well, sure, potentially, unless the Shaker said, sure, we'll put it in conservation. But, um, any of that. That, that, if you get that, when you get a minute, and, and just let me know and, uh, we'll get together.
Sounds good to me.
Thank you for doing that.
Of course.
Yes, that's it.
Old Home Days Committee resignations. We have four resignations from the Old Home Day Committee. Ron Hill, Stephanie Hill, Kristen Harrington. And Lori Blitzkill. Uh, I had agreed to go back on. Old Home Day Committee. And then I heard of this mass resignation. And I contacted Dolores and Dolores and I are going to meet on Wednesday. Dolores and I co-chaired the two fiftieth celebration for Enfield. And I thought, well, we've worked together before. So we're going to meet Wednesday afternoon to have a brainstorming session to see.
Here, and Shirley remains and Shirley has a long standing history and Jason and Tracy have a.
Right.
He'll have a long history. Yes, exactly. So I think you have a good team that you can build.
All these hills related?
Yes.
Well, well, Lori Hill is not related to Stephanie and Ron. Stephanie and Ron was. Laurie is. And feel must pizza. They're not related. Uh, but I would recommend or suggest that they do send a letter of thanks.
I would be, that's their resignation with regards.
All in favor? We've already talked about the Hughes Park of the water line, correct?
We have. Oh, sorry, yeah, I forgot that was it.
YouTube video setting option for board and committee meetings.
Yes.
I guess, are you still?
Well, actually Angus and I sat down and he, he helped me out with showing how to post videos onto. And I sent you a link to view it. It's currently unlisted.
Okay.
So there are two ways that they can be posted. They could be unlisted or they could be public. Public, you'd easily be able to Google it. Public, you'd easily be able to Google it and find it. Unlisted, it'd be harder to find that way, but we can have a easily have a link on our website.
I think that's the way to go.
The only question is whether you, so. We were just talking back and forth and it seemed like, well, is anybody not going to participate in your minds? If they think that it's really public, like out there easy to. Versus available publicly because everybody can't, we're going to put it on our Facebook page. So we're telling everybody. We put it in the newsletter that they're available. I've already created a new tab on our homepage for videos, so it's right there on the homepage. We go to that, we can list them all. So if you don't think that there's any issue with having it really public and that it will. Inhibit anybody's participation in any way, that would be fine. But if you think there's a chance that it would inhibit people from participating, that it's out there and they're in it too, all the participants. Then we can do it as unlisted, so it's more, you know, infield-based as opposed to worldwide.
I, we dealt with this in an organization I'm active with. We had a person who needed to not be seen or found. We had a person who needed to not be seen or found because of the public safety risk. And so what we did was we had them sit. And then the the person operating it knew that. And so I think there, but we could have an option. Obviously with the owl, that's not, but. You know, when you go out in public, if you walk in front of a store that has cameras, there's a potential where there's, you know, with facial recognition and. Artificial intelligence, people can find stuff, so it's already a danger. I'm not saying everyone's that technical, but. If somebody has a physical danger, I hope they would tell us and maybe try to write something else. They could also appear on this as. Enfield resident and not so their face.
What is your school opinion, Angus?
Uh, thanks, Meredith. I I'm in favor of having it. Completely public, freely available. Not just by link only, which we've been discussing is the other option. Basically, because it it makes it easier to find, we'll have, if you go to. I can share the link or Lisa can share the link. We set up. Enfield, New Hampshire, Town of Enfield, New Hampshire YouTube channel, which you need to be able to upload these videos. And that would be another place, even though there is now a tab on the town website homepage for videos. You could also find the videos on the YouTube website. And I just think having them more readily available is better. If there is. If there isn't any general concern about them being publicly available, widely available, and they will be available on the website anyway. I think the more accessible that the videos are, the better personally.
And we have already have the TV station and we have the Facebook. Option, so I don't see.
And and it's not as though, like, if you search Jim Taylor's name or my name. That's not going to link to the video because the the video is only going to be accessible if you search Enfield. You know, whatever, whatever meeting, select board meeting or. It's not going to expose our names or the names of the participants automatically. Yeah, or at least it shouldn't. It won't currently.
There's another really interesting piece, which we haven't touched on yet, too, with YouTube and that is. A lot of services will allow both captioning of videos and that's something that we are not able to offer here tonight. But for someone who is hearing impaired, being able to read as you go to get instead of just reading the minutes, is it? So and I definitely.
I use it when I'm watching some of those English television programs and I cannot understand what's.
I I mean, I love those captions and I use them. I think it's great and the library has a public channel.
Angus, is there a mechanism to know how many people. Access these recordings?
Anyone can see how many people have accessed the the recordings just on the videos page itself. It'll show how many views it has. And as owners of the of the channel, you'll be able to see a little more detail. You'll be able to see where the views came from. I think in other metrics, other statistics about people watching the videos.
I I'll be interested because I was. Just a country boycott, so I'm thinking, who's really back in this? How many people possibly?
And people go to Storytime on the library and you see they have you.
Yeah, so I.
I think for. A rough comparable, I was on. The state houses redistricting committee at a public hearing last week. And there were all of thirty people in the whole state watching it, so there were more people there to. To speak, yes, to speak in person than there were watching on YouTube live. And I don't know, yeah, I don't know that any others have looked at it since it was archived, so, yeah. It's not going to be a ton of people, but every little bit helps.
And this is just one of those things that kind of came up in our conversation is there's this option, so which way do you want to go? And if the board wants to go public, we will make them public. We'll still post the link on our website, but.
I'd go with Angus's recommendation.
This is a lot of work, administration.
Not for each, so each individual video, it takes a certain amount of time to upload and you can't close the tab, but you can do other things. So as long as you don't close it when you go in.
Well, maybe the.
And you can set up different people who have access to it. So I've already set up Rob and he does, he may know about it now, but.
Yeah, it would be nice to divide this up a little bit because, you know, everything takes a little bit of time. Everything takes a little bit of time.
He strokes town. They add up very quickly.
They do. So anybody who does Zoom meetings that I think had or that has. Enough skills to do this. I'm all for letting them do this.
I agree.
We don't have, at this point, you know, with, I think it's the main board.
Right. We might want to limit how deep we go into that.
Yeah, and and I and at some level, I think certainly for these purposes, it's important to recognize we're doing this just as a general. Courtesy. There's nothing that's required about this, meeting all of the legal obligations for public meetings and all of that stuff. This is just an experiment with courtesy and.
And it certainly beats hiring and paying for a whole nother service, which was one of the proposals.
But that would have been a waste of money.
It was, yeah, I just. Average calculation, it was like fifty dollars per person per session based on average. You like that? I was like numbers.
Okay, well, I am satisfied.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, Angus.
Okay, uh, second issue, property tax warrant.
The tax rate has been set and we have the second issue property tax warrant, which we will need to sign before you leave.
Is that it? Do we need to discuss it at all, Elisa, or just?
What's done is done. What's done is done.
Okay. Are there any public comments? Of other business that has not yet been discussed? I don't see anybody but Angus on that. New computer, the video thing. If not, I would entertain a motion to.
So moves.
You're really good at that.
I am. It's not that I don't love my argue, but I know I really be a busy person. I.